Okay, good evening everyone, welcome to the town board work session of May 7th, 2024. The board has been in executive session seeking advice of council. We have a motion to close the exec session and open the work session.
So me.
Second, all in favor?
I.
Please say aye. Okay, so today we're going to start off with a discussion of the Indian Brook Croton Gorge intermunicipal waters watershed protection overlay district local law. Sabrina, do you want to get us started to explain? Get the context of this law?
Sure, good evening everybody. So as I have informed you all, the Indian Brook Croton Gorge intermunicipal watershed protection overlay district covers five municipalities. It covers the town of Newcastle at its northernmost, northwest northeastern most point, the village of Croton, the town of Osning, the village of Osning, and the town of Cortland. This the watershed protection overlay district is an outcome of a 2008 watershed plan that was produced with the five municipalities in Westchester County, which really look to water quality and protecting water resources in the watershed. The Indian Brook watershed supplies Osning with their drinking water. The homes in Newcastle in this watershed have drinking water wells. The protection measures, the effort was intended to try and bring all of the municipalities up to the same level of protections. Being one of the the more one of the being a municipality with large lot zoning in this area and given our environmental protection overlay zone that exists today, we have a higher standard than most of the other municipalities. So in many ways, the the protection overlay district is really raising other municipalities up to the level of protection that Newcastle uses. I can, I'm gonna walk you through some of the more salient parts of the legislation so you understand. There's not a lot of differences other than I can give you page numbers on page five. There is a requirement that all new subdivisions greater than four lots must be designed as a conservation or a cluster subdivision. This is something that we we provide in our code today throughout the town as an option and it's typically a direction that the planning board gives when they get a subdivision that's four lots or greater, if it's not three lots or greater. So with this, it's saying any subdivision within the area of this watershed in Newcastle, we would automatically want them to be a conservation subdivision. On page seven of the local law, we start on page six, we talk about prohibited uses and practices. On page seven, it talks about no locating dry cleaners within this overlay area. The area of our community in this watershed is residentially zoned and there is one special use permit, the Sunshine Children Home, Sunshine Children's Home in this watershed, so we would not by right of zoning allow many of these uses. One of the largest restricted use is a tier three battery storage system. We currently don't entertain battery storage, battery energy storage systems that are not associated with a solar installation, so this is further prohibiting them in this portion of our land area. On page seven, we start with performance criteria. The performance criteria within this section is nothing new to Newcastle. In the east of Hudson watershed, we require this very same performance criteria. Soil disturbances of 5,000 square feet or greater need to comply with DEC stormwater manual. We automatically make our soil disturbances of that size comply with DEC stormwater manual in the east of Hudson watershed. Any new construction which creates new impervious surfaces greater than 1,000 square feet has to be consistent with the stormwater design manual. And I think we just made some changes to that, which are even more restrictive. This also requires septic systems to be pumped at least once every three year period. The MS4 stormwater permit requires us to ensure that septic systems are pumped once every five years, so this is a little bit more restrictive. On page nine, there is a a section called restricted buffer uses. In our code today, we do not have a restrictive 150-foot buffer, meaning you can't do anything in it, certain things are allowed in that buffer. This overlay in this section of town would now limit these types of activities in that buffer area. Excavation and grading, conversion to lawn, mining activities, application of pesticides and herbicides and fertilizers, creation of dams, water diversion, stream channels. So again, they're saying that there's no disturbance to a buffer. And then on, and I'm just providing you with the highlights of the legislation.
Sabrina, can I just stop you for one second?
Sure.
Restricted buffer uses. Now, I'm just a little concerned about the de-icing application of road salt.
That is, that is, that is different, that's within the buffer. If it is a roadway, there's a section under, on section eight where it talks about chloride salt application for de-icing purposes, which is it's, the use is restricted to the minimum amount needed for public safety.
Okay, okay, I gotcha, I see it.
Yeah.
Number 15, I gotcha.
Correct. So this really, the restricted buffer uses really is notification to property owners more so.
Okay, good.
You know, if you have a driveway in the buffer, that type of thing. But if it's for safety purposes, it is allowed per the discretion of the highway superintendent. And then on the, my last call out for you is on page 10. There's a wellhead buffer and stormwater hotspot section and this requires no disturbance within 200 feet of any wellhead or stormwater hotspot. And that's different, we don't regulate that in our code today, but a wellhead to a drinking water source, there has to be a 200-foot buffer.
And what gets filled in in the highlighted section?
Correct, correct.
No, no, what? So G2?
Oh, as defined in, it will relate back to the definition section of this code. So this code right now needs some circular referencing, which will.
I see, I see, I gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And this is the same law that has already been passed by some of the IMA?
Portland has passed it, Croton is in the process of passing it, and Osning is also in the process of passing it.
So it was the intention of the IMA group that we would be passing it as well?
Correct, we had a DEC grant to help us formulate this legislation and that grant requires adoption by the end of, end of June.
So Sabrina, how much of the watershed does our town comprise?
Um.
Like I thought I saw somewhere that we, the town of Newcastle is 15%?
Yeah, it's, it's.
Of the watershed?
Is 15% of the watershed, there's about 100 parcels, Newcastle parcels within this watershed and they're mainly single, two-acre, single-family homes.
Is there a town that that is a largest proportion of the watershed?
It is all of the Osning's.
All of, so I mean, this affects the Osning drinking water quite significantly, right?
Correct.
Also.
Yeah.
And also Croton's in some, some respects. And then this all goes down to the Hudson River. And at some point, it affects, how does it affect New York City drinking water? I thought there was a connection. Is there a connection to that at all?
No, this, no, there's not a connection to New York City drinking water. There's, I am making comparisons between the protections within the New York City drinking water system to the protections under this legislation in relation to Osning's drinking water system.
Okay.
Okay.
So of all the activities here, what are residents likely to run into where this might affect, might affect them?
The septic system pump-out required?
In a one or two-acre property, where because of a lot, a lot of these uses seem unlikely for our residents. So how might this affect an ordinary resident?
The biggest change is the requiring the septic system pump out every three years. And if you have a property with a stream, there's certain, you know, there's certain things you can't do in that buffer today. This actually gives you prohibitions. So a lot of times, people with stream buffers, 150-foot wetland buffer, they will create a lawn, they'll take down trees, establish lawn. This prohibits them from doing that. We don't require that in our code, but we're not, you know, the issue of this whole thing, like every other issue, is enforcement.
Right, okay. And also, this is a small part of our town, so about 3% of our town, I think?
Yep, yes. Yeah, I can share a map if you'd like me to.
Yeah, I think we have, we have that, but if you want to put it up in case people are interested in looking.
Sure.
And how will people be aware of the restrictions? Will it be when they submit for a permit to do something? Or do we have to have some sort of an educational effort?
We will make them aware as we're reviewing projects. You know, if they run into any of the prohibitions within this legislation.
You have a pretty detailed listing of all the parcels. So I'm assuming.
We are required.
We can send them mailings.
Yes, we can.
Yeah.
Yes, and we can flag them in our, in our computer system to, you know, so that we know when they come in that this parcel is subject to these regulations, much like we do with a property in the New York City watershed and the MS4 stormwater regulations are requiring us to do more in regards to tracking. So we will apply it to this area of the town as well.
Okay.
There was concern submitted about the onerous aspect of 200 feet no disturbance from the wellhead. And I just wonder if we should ask Sabrina about that.
Yeah, that was, was partly, oh, sorry.
If that's going to be difficult for.
Sabrina, could you?
Yeah, if there is existing disturbance, then that disturbance stays. It's additional disturbance. You know, if there's, if there, a wellhead, it's a divine wellhead. They're asking that, you know, for the municipal systems, there's a definition in here. And you know, the 200 feet surrounding it is, is no disturbance. If they're currently, you know, if the wellhead is right now in the middle of a parking lot, there's nothing we can do about that. But it's no future disturbance.
Yeah, I guess that's why I'd ask my question about what might the ordinary resident with just a simple, you know, residential property, private property, might encounter or might not be able to do based on this local law. So within 200 feet of a wellhead, is that what you were talking about? Not having a lawn or not, not cutting down trees?
And the, and the buffer.
Basically, is that, what, sorry?
And in a buffer against a water body or a wetland.
Oh, okay, so there's kind of two criteria for the wellhead to be affected.
Correct.
Okay, okay. So that's probably even less.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I guess I'd want to know what, you know, what this individual was, was thinking about. I mean, maybe, well, we'll have a public hearing and we'll have, people will have the opportunity to.
Yeah.
Play in and explain, explain situations they might find themselves in. But, but as it is, I mean, this is really about protecting drinking water in the watershed area, it's obviously, you know, protecting wetlands and biodiversity. So I would think that that would take, that would take precedence over someone wanting a lawn or cutting down trees. But we'll set this for public hearing.
I just want to make sure that people are aware when they're taking their bio home that this is the restrictions that they're under. And I am also concerned that, you know, when it comes to, you know, taking down a couple of trees and planting a lawn, that they may not need to necessarily come in to get a permit.
Oh, if they're taking down a couple of trees, they do.
What?
If they're taking down trees, they do.
Well, not for every tree you take down.
Um, depending on the size of the tree.
No, no, true.
Yeah, but I think we've had, we've had problems in town with people taking down trees without permits. It's significant cutting of trees without permits.
Folks, I'm very sorry.
That's another story.
I need to jump over to another meeting. I'm happy to answer any other questions and respond to any concerns that the public might have.
Well, we are going to set it down for a public hearing.
Thank you, Sabrina. All right, bye-bye, thank you.
Okay, bye-bye, thank you, Sabrina.
Bye, Sabrina. Do we have a date?
Oh, everyone, you know what, this is a, this is a work session. We don't really have, we don't have comment. But this is going to go in a public hearing, you'll have ample opportunity to ask.
Point of need more time.
To ask questions. You will have that opportunity.
Okay, I was actually on the steering committee of 2008 W and D and Brook action playoffs.
Yeah, I know, you probably know a lot about this, but come back to, to the public hearing. We can talk about it.
Thank you.
That, yeah, that's when Sabrina said, "Sorry." 2008, and then they got a grant to be able to overcome the legislation.
Yeah, it was, it was a state time to the, to Westchester County.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, and to them specifically.
Okay.
They were aware, yeah, when it came through.
Sabrina has done with June 11th, the public hearing.
But we're going to set it tonight for a public hearing.
That far out?
Yeah. It has to be, it has to be 30 days and.
But I thought you said we have.
And there's a secret that has to be done.
But I thought you said we have to pass it by the end of June, how is that possible?
I think, I think we talked about adopting it at the same night.
Yeah.
Well, we have, we have an extra week. In case we, you know.
We have June 20th.
Five, okay. Four, no, 25.
Well, we have June 11th and.
So we could.
We're not meeting the week of the 18th.
Yeah.
Right, we don't meet the.
Hang on, we don't meet the 18th because that is.
It's grievance day.
We've been staying.
Oh, a tax grievance day.
But we need.
So we're not here with a hint of this Juneteenth, so.
So those are two, two meetings.
Right, I think that's fine to have public comment on the 11th. As long as we don't have to, as long as we don't need to adopt a reason to keep it open after the 11th.
Well, we can have two public hearings, we can have one on the 11th and one on the 25th.
Right, and then a plan to adopt on the 25th.
Jill, is there a span of days where we have to have the letter signed and brought up?
No, our, our only thing is just that because we have.
You need Gmail too, it's got to go for Gmail probably.
Right, so it was going to be 30. So it needs a 30-day lead time in between the time, the day we set a public hearing, the date that we actually start the public hearing. So we can't do it before June 7th, which is a Friday, so we have to pick the.
It has to be the.
Okay.
But some, some laws have to get to Albany by a certain time.
Yeah, so by the end of June, so.
What's our, what's our deadline in order to get to Albany?
You do need to, you need to approve it by the 25th.
Okay, so we don't have till the end of the month. It has to get to Albany by the end of the month. And we don't want.
Christina, you have to drive it.
Lauren, or Moren, or Moren.
Lauren's like, I love her. She's halfway there already. Oh, she can't answer.
Yeah, well, seriously, she's, yeah, she's.
You could sort of pass the time.
That's what we do.
Oh, is that what you do?
Yes.
She comes in and I say she grants it, she goes, yeah.
She knows where to go. But there is a.
But if we can avoid that.
Yeah, you could do that too. I mean, she did, she did the form, I think, the short form, CAF.
Yeah, we're gonna get Vicki Stinchella short, yeah, tonight.
Yep, because that's, that's to go out to the county.
Yeah. That's kind of, okay.
Okay, so I'm sorry, what's with the, yeah?
No, Vicki's got to sign it, the CAF.
Okay, I'm gonna have to send it out.
And then that goes to Gmail, so they can apply it.
Oh, so it's gonna make a stop.
And they have to register.
Yeah, because yeah, if you need Gmail review, that's why he can't take any action in the third year if it has to go for Gmail review.
Gmail stands for?
Gmail is for law, 239M.
Such a shame.
We have to give the county time to do this.
Okay, so, um.
Okay, the correct draft is in, I'm hoping this, the agenda. So our cultural heritage month is.
So we're going to talk about a cultural heritage month calendar. The town board has. Are you guys, are you ready to move on?
Yeah, no, copies just there. They looked for a, looked at hard copies because it seemed like it wasn't all that robust.
Okay. What was it?
That's what I have.
Okay. But, okay, so let, well, let's start the conversation then. So the town has recognized a couple of cultural heritage months and we thought it would be, it would be a good idea, you know, in terms of our efforts to be inclusive and create a sense of belonging in town that we should, we should recognize all of the heritage months that are recognized by the US government. So we have a tentative calendar here and, you know, we'd like to do this in a way that's consistent. So in the past, we've recognized Black History Month and we've also recognized AAPI. Jill, correct me if I'm wrong, we recognized AAPI month for a certain year. We didn't recognize it for a general month. So the two weren't, were not done in a consistent way. So what we'd like to do is simply recognize the heritage months and it's something that you do on a one-time basis and then the following years, you know, we can celebrate those months.
We would be like adopting a calendar.
But we would be setting, you know, issuing a proclamation on a one-time basis for those months. So we have a calendar here, I don't know why it says military heritage month calendar. It ought to say US, US federally recognized. Because that has nothing to do with the military.
And does Polish Hispanic Heritage Month?
No.
What happened?
Forgive us, we, yeah, I'm not really sure.
And German Hispanic.
We didn't prove, we didn't prove.
It's a, it's a, it'd be German Heritage Month, Italian Heritage Month, Polish Heritage Month, and then Hispanic Heritage Month?
Yes, yes, and the National Hispanic Heritage Month, it goes from September to October, the 15th.
And some of, some of these are listed as like, like Irish-American, Greek-American. Would, would it be German-American, Italian-American, Polish-American? Or would we do that for consistency?
I think it's the way that it's labeled, as it's federally recognized.
And that's what we were going by.
Okay.
I think it should say German-American, Italian-American, Polish-American. So these are typos.
I'm sorry, please.
It's okay, Jill, don't worry, yeah.
It's not bad. Thank you, all right.
And also Pride Month and Women's History Month are included here, although they're not. And, and, you know, we celebrate those, but those are not the cultural heritage months. But these are on the federal calendar, so they're here. And so I just, I thought it was important that if we celebrate some, that we be, we be consistent and inclusive of all of them. There's no, there's no reason not to. And so there it is, so I just want everyone to take a look at this calendar. It's nothing to vote on, but I just want to agree in concept that we can do this and then we would present proclamations at each month. And I know we're not doing this on the calendar starting in January. So, no, we apologize to all those that we might have missed, but at any point in time that we do this, we would have missed some previous ones. So we intend not to recognize a lot of them. And coming up, we, we did recognize AAPI, but like I said, we, I think the town recognized it only for that year.
And it was a year ago?
It was a year ago. Uh, no, it was not a year ago.
No, I think it was 50, 30 years ago, either 20, 21 or 22.
Right, and I think it's labeled differently now, sorry. So coming up this month would be Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islanders Heritage Month. And it's also Jewish-American History Month. Then in June is Caribbean American Heritage Month. Then in September, which goes from mid-September to mid-October, is Hispanic Heritage Month. October is German, Italian, and Polish-American Heritage Months. November is Native American Heritage Month. February is Black History Month, which we have done already. March, we have Irish-American and Greek-American. In April, Arab-American History Month. So those are, those are the federally recognized heritage months.
I think it makes sense to adopt the calendar that our federal government has already adopted to be consistent in the way that we acknowledge all of these things.
Yeah, so this is just for purposes of discussion for, so for next meeting, we'll have a correct calendar and we will have a couple of proclamations for the month of May. Okay, and I, I, there's a draft of the Jewish-American Heritage Month proclamation. It was just for, for an, as an example. And we also have a, not a draft, but the actual Asian Pacific Heritage Month proclamation that was passed in 2003, so it was, it was last year, Jill. Huh. It was last year.
But it was before that, we must have done it.
Yeah, we must have done it before because Lauren loved it. Right, I remember, I remember, it was the first time it was recognized.
Yeah.
And she wrote it.
But it was recognized from May 2020.
Yeah.
So it's there for you to look at for information purposes. But we'll have, we'll have two proclamations next week. Okay, so now let's turn to honorary, honorary street sign policy.
So this is really interesting. A number of people have come up with some ideas about how to make the Hudson's line and the issue of whether or not we would name a street actually came up. And we were a little spoiled when it came to Hunt's place and changing the name to Jumping Bornway because the town, with the recycling center, DPW, a mall yard, and the bus company, we, we're the overwhelming property owners of all construction. It is a very heavy lift for neighbors, especially. Your deed doesn't show the name, your driver's license, 911, gets a confused. Your packages, the mailbox, your post office.
It's like you, you're moving.
Like you're moving.
Yeah, right. But, but I thought it was a fantastic idea and it's a great way to honor Mr. Lang, so we can do an honorary street naming. And, you know, like you might have seen in other towns, you might see a name above, above the street. And if you do that, people have the option of putting that name instead of.
Oh, they do? They can leave instead?
I think I, I think I read that, is that not the case, Jill?
That I'm not familiar with. I would certainly leave your own street on there, but.
Well, no, it's, it says right here.
Yeah, you can add it.
You can add it, but you got to leave the honorary street on there.
The postal address for honorary streets remains the primary name of the road. However, mail can be addressed to honorary streets identified as renamed. That's what it says right here in the second paragraph.
Is this, this is in an, in Osning's, right?
Oh, this is in Osning, right. So this is Osning's policy. They've been very successful with it. They actually have their town historian play a major role in this. They actually get the applications, they let them make sure there's a connection between our center of the street. And their law has been in effect since 2005. They have 14 of these throughout the country, so it's not, so it's in the total lineup. I did take the opportunity to meet Jen to Gray Williams to see whether we would be interested, and he said yes. So I thought that was pretty very welcome.
Would it be something that we, that, that we take the action to make the decision on rather than taking requests? that that we take the action to make the decision on rather than taking requests? Um
So requests would come in through an application.
So well
Okay.
Yeah, I mean the the process that I that I saw that Austining has is someone submits an application. You know, obviously they give the proposed name, the name of the existing street, the description of the honoree's life. Um, their contributions to the town, their connection to the proposed street. Um and then they and then the town makes a decision and presents a resolution to the historic town town historian. And then the historian has a certain number of days by which to present their findings to the town. Then at least in in Austining, there's a public hearing. And then the town board votes.
I would
So I thought
Yeah, me too. I think that's the process.
Yeah, it's for people to know and so ultimately it's a town board decision, but people can but we don't have
The village
Yeah.
I have an application for this.
I agree. And then opening up for a public hearing.
Yeah, and then it's
It's one that they are in the past fifteen years.
I agree. Thank you, town.
I think so the fee schedule.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was wondering how they do this cuz I've seen I've noticed Peter Falk place.
Uh-huh. Uh-huh.
The only thing I would suggest is, you know, in terms of the cost, who bears the cost of putting up that sign? Because obviously there's a cost factor, so you may wanna consider as part of the application fee just what it costs for us to put an additional sign of our street sign.
Mm-hmm.
And maybe kind of bake that into the schedule just to see what it would cost and then let's get an idea
That's a great idea.
estimate just so, because they can be a little pricey, so it's a natural.
Okay, so thank you.
Yeah, maybe for uh future application, but in this case we wanted to do something in honor of Mr. Lang from the town. So I would think that we we would bear that cost because it's something that we're doing
Yeah, I'm just saying, it's it that's all good. If you're adopting it with Austining or something like that, just need to find out what the cost is associated with that.
For his family. Yes, okay.
And um and I think because the policy that they would do it unless the person had passed that's how it started, then they did for Peter Falk because he came to visit. And then you'll see in twenty fifteen to now, they've done quite a few. So I don't know if you wanna
To limit that.
To limit it because in the past eight years, there's quite a few people that are still alive in here.
Something like that.
I don't know what their criteria is.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Yeah, that's a good
Mm-hmm. And maybe And have chances of that only that can be criteria.
I think we should yeah, this should be how I'm visually this is in
A post office.
random memorial, you know?
Yes, so that's why I keep that in mind, yeah.
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 In memorial. So would that be a requirement of person's location? Yes.
Yes. Yeah, it's it's up to the so we have to town board, but like I said, it's
That's a good place.
you don't want it to get watered down and that's why um you know, they say Sunny Shurrock and the postmaster makes reference to it. Those were some they're significant when they pass and things like that. These other people, many of them are still alive and I would wonder if you use that as an address of anyone who find these streets.
Yeah, I think that would be consistent with what we've done with Joan Corwin Way, Joan Corwin passed away. We have Marian Sinek Place. That was done after Marian Sinek passed away, so I think
Casey Town.
Right, yeah. We have the Casey Town field, so it's um
Yeah, so it's a
It's consistent with what we've done.
Yeah.
So
But I have a question. Should should we be thinking about a general like so the Casey Town and the other ones we couldn't handle was a one-off and now we're talking about a policy for streets. I mean, should we have a general policy for honorary naming? Or
Well, right now I I I would like to stick to street naming because it's relatively simple and I'd like to to do this sooner rather than later and if there's a policy for naming other other parts of the town like fields or
Do we need to pass this to be able to do something for Mr. Lang?
You don't know the motion.
No.
I mean, you yeah, you don't okay, you can do this on your own motion.
No, we don't. Right.
But then for subject win request, you can adopt the policy for this one.
I think we should we should pass a policy, but for now, we can go ahead and do this. This is of our own volition.
I agree. I agree, yeah.
Correct.
In honor of Mr. Lang.
Do you wish to richie richie Lynn? Richard Lynn?
I think we should ask the family.
I I would I I will definitely
Yeah. Would you ask what what they live for?
touch base again, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll be talking about this again. I'll talk about it again next week.
Okay.
When I know I have more details. Okay. Good, I'm um I think this is a wonderful, it's a wonderful idea.
Yeah. That's that's not supposed to be here.
Yeah, why is it?
Yeah, we should definitely
Make sure they're not dismembered.
Yes, either that or yeah, wait, I
Like I do.
Uh, I like that uh something in like up to for to the family.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, congratulations.
Yeah, it's really it's it's lovely.
Okay, um, great. I think we've covered all the topics. We're up to administrative items.
Yeah. Right, so we've got our payment claims. Um, the board may or may not be aware, but we actually joined with uh CCSD in um going out to bid for um uh shared services or garbage removal. So um we switch off as to who actually does the bidding. Um, I think CCSD is doing it um yeah, is this year, so um they went out to bid for uh CCSD buildings and also um Tamaki Castle on buildings. And so Santa Cruz picking up for both of us, so this is just a authorization to extend the contract for another year. Uh, next is authorization to release the letter of credit and um accept the cash bond agreement. This is for Sunshine Children's, so um basically their um their work is complete. And uh we're we're starting to move into just the um the cash bond agreement to just guarantee all the plans and stuff like that. Uh, next is a street opening permit release as well. So again, work has been done um to the satisfaction of DPW and they're recommending the uh the bond be released. Um, uh, this is a request for Lauren to attain uh uh that attain in the annual conference um of uh it's New York State county manager. What's the C for?
City manager.
Yeah, city-county.
Ah, City-and-County Managers Association. Uh, it's up in Albany for a couple of days, um Saratoga, sorry, for a couple of days. It's the uh the twenty-first and the twenty-third, but she'll be back in time for the memorial day parade and to get all those programs ready, so that's the deal. Um, and this is a revised agenda. Um, last time we took in um accepted we authorized authorization to authorization. We authorized final acceptance and payment to Barrett Roofs for the DPW roof replacement, um but we need to um accept the maintenance bond. Correct?
Yeah.
Which is so the the resolution is still more familiar to you, but it's slightly different. And then we've got um our proposed actions, our payment of claims, um our hiring of additional staff. Uh, we've got um again just a revised resolution regarding our social media coordinator. Um, that's a stipend. We initially had it done as a power fee. Um, and it needs to be done as a stipend.
And it's for a discrete period.
Yes, for for yes, exactly right. Um let's see, we've got authorization to accept the to attend the conference that we just mentioned on Lauren. Um, we've got authorization to revise a part-time salary schedule. It's the addition of a court officer um that uh that inadvertently omitted from our part-time schedule, so piece back. Um, and again, um the revised resolution for Barrett Roofs and to authorize uh us to set the public hearing on a local law regarding the Indian Dorcrotin Gorge intermunicipal water protection overlay district. Did you know that?
Okay, okay.
And then we've got resolutions.
Okay, I'll start with um payment of claims. Holly, do you wanna do you wanna do you wanna switch the order? Okay.
Uh, I moved to approve the payment of claims in the amount of three million six hundred forty-one thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and sixteen cents. List on summary pre-check writing report in detail about your detail report. Date of May third, twenty twenty-four. Checks will be printed and distributed to each claimant listed on Wednesday, May eighth, twenty twenty-four. Second.
All in favor?
Hi. I move to authorize the hiring of foreign individuals as recreation attendants for twenty twenty-four camp adventure corresponding rates is indicated in the resolution effective July first, twenty twenty-four. Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Um
Um, I move to authorize the hiring of Matthew Hernandez to serve as the social media coordinator and independent contractor for the total amount of two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to be given two installments of one thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars um first on May tenth and the second on June seventh, twenty twenty-four, for a period of eight weeks effective retroactively to April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Second.
All in favor?
Hi. I move to authorize Lauren Cascone to attend the twenty twenty-four Annual New York State City-City-County Management Association Conference to be held on May twenty-first through the twenty-third in Saratoga Springs, New York for the total amount not to exceed nine hundred dollars, which includes four hundred and fifty dollars registration fee plus approximately four hundred and fifty dollars in hotel fees and further authorize the use of a town vehicle. Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I move to authorize the revision to the twenty twenty-four part-time salary schedule to add Scott Cronin as a PTA court attendant at the hourly rate of forty dollars fifty cents effective retroactively to January first, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
I'm
I move to authorize the acceptance and payment to Barrett Roofs Inc. for the DPW twenty twenty-three to oh nine roof replacement project at the Millwood Water Treatment Plant for the total amount of ninety-four thousand seven hundred and twenty-two dollars twenty-one cents as per the letter of transmittal dated April third, twenty twenty-four as well as accept the two-year maintenance bond in a sum of one million dollars seventy-seven thousand sixty-four dollars thirteen cents. This resolution hereby revises the one previously adopted on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second. That's sorry, that was a long one.
All in favor?
Hi.
I move to set a public hearing on a local law regarding Indian Dorcrotin Gorge intermunicipal watershed protection overlay district for Tuesday, June eleventh, twenty twenty-four at the Town and Castle Town Hall at seven thirty P M or as soon thereafter as reached on the town board agenda that evening.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, so now I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting to enter to adjourn the work session, to enter to executive sec- executive session to receive advice of council.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Public work session is adjourned. Thank you, everybody, and good night.